Testing.
All right, everybody. It is 7:02 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order while this meeting is being held in person in consideration of ongoing COVID-19 health concerns. We are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Now please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fokes, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 All right, we do not have any public hearings on our agenda this evening, but before we move into our special presentations, I'd like to invite Chief Madden up to the podium to make a couple remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all are probably well aware, the North Kansas City Police Department lost an officer last night or yesterday morning senselessly. It's always difficult for all of us when there's a loss in the law enforcement community. Makes it more difficult when it impacts a couple of our officers who are pretty good friends with Officer Vasquez. In the same six years to the day prior dealt with the exact same thing with Captain Melton. And we had two of our officers were very good friends with him as well, so. I would just ask for a quick moment of silence so we can think about Officer Vasquez, his friends, family, his police officer family, and pray for the citizens of North Kansas City for healing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We do have two special presentations this evening. Our first presentation is the introduction of our new city clerk. Ms. Smith, will you please make the intros?
I have never been more pleased to make this introduction. Some of you have had the opportunity to meet Robin as you've come in and out of the office over the last week or so, but we are very pleased and proud to introduce Robin Fokes, who is our new city clerk. She started last Tuesday and she already has Emily and I back on the right track, so that's been a really great feeling. And we look forward to just continuing to plan. She apparently is not afraid of baptism by fire and actually deals very well with it, but she's been a great addition. She came to us most recently from the Western District Court of Appeals. No, Circuit Court, Circuit Court. And she was in working in their bankruptcy court, brings, I think, 17 years of experience in the legal field here. And so we look forward to, I know you'll all have a chance over time to get to know her very well, but don't hesitate to pick up the phone or stop by and say hello. But thank you, Robin, for joining the team and we look forward to great things ahead. I think I already shared this with all of you, but she's also a Mission resident who lives on Woodson. For so, for some of you may know, apparently we grow city clerks maybe on Woods and that's where, that's where Martha lives. And she has a daughter, her husband and daughter, her husband's traveling out of town for the first time since COVID, and so was unable to be here tonight as well, but her husband Brad and her daughter Claire, who will be starting the second grade at Rushton Elementary School. So Robin is very involved with the Rushton PTA and Girl Scout troop. And she's already told us she can organize the agendas, but keep her out of the crafts, I think. Is that what you? Don't put a glue stick and glitter in her hand, I think is what she's saying. So anyway, we're thrilled and just glad that she's here.
Great, welcome and glad to have you. Our second presentation tonight is a proclamation declaring July as Parks and Recreation Month. Parks and Recreation are virtually are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental wellbeing of our community and region. Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities and increase the community's economic prosperity. So as we proclaim this as Parks and Recreation Month, I encourage you all to enjoy our many facilities, parks and programs, and thank Director Almany and his staff for their important work. Penn, would you and let's see, Jenny, I think Jenna, Craig and Taylor, sorry if I've missed anyone, but would you all like to come forward to receive the proclamation?
We have the Parks and Recreation Department, thank you.
All right, short and sweet. I like it. All right, we do not have any items related to the issuance of notes or bonds this evening, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has four items tonight. Our council committees met on July 6th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed, items 4A through 4D.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, Robin, please call the roll.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Loudon.
Hi.
Riard.
Stain.
Krang.
I.
Inman.
I.
Chosey.
I.
Davis.
I.
All right, next we will move into our public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items not included on this agenda, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make the comment. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any public comments tonight? All right, seeing none, we would move into action items for our planning commission, but we do not have any items coming forward from the planning commission this evening, so we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Boltinghouse, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on July 6th and considered two items. The Meeting Minutes and a Contract for Crossing Guard Services with All City Management Services, ACMS, were approved under the consent agenda. No items will be considered tonight under the regular agenda. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Chosey, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on July 6th and considers three items. The Meeting Minutes, Community Center HVAC Maintenance Agreement and the Mohawk Park Inspection Services were approved under the consent agenda. There is one additional item for consideration on the regular agenda tonight. That's item 7A, Engineering Services Task Order for 55th Street from Lamar Avenue to 165 feet east of Maple Street. During budget discussion, city council has expressed an interest in accelerating the residential street preservation program depending on available funding. The city has currently allocated $2 million annually for residential streets and four residential streets are currently in design for construction in 2023. The pavement condition index or PCI for 55th Street from Lamar to east of Maple Street, the city limits ranges from 34, which is considered very poor, to 55.1, which is considered poor. And the asphalt depth ranges from three inches to eight inches. Based on the pavement condition and the poor condition of the sidewalk, the street is identified as the next highest priority street after the 2023 residential streets currently in design. The scope of work for 55th Street includes full-depth pavement reconstruction, curb and gutter, sidewalk retaining wall and driveway approach removal and replacement, and stormwater improvements or repairs for pipes, structures and culverts with risk ratings of fours and fives. If this task order is approved, Olson will begin design for potential construction in 2023. During preliminary design, staff will reach out to utility companies, Water One, Johnson County Wastewater, Kansas Gas Service, et cetera, who have all expressed interest in replacing their infrastructure prior to street reconstruction. Depending on the number of utilities interested in replacement and their timelines, the construction may need to be delayed until 2024. However, city staff and Olson will make every effort to construct 55th Street in 2023 if at all possible. The task order includes all design services for 51st Street, survey, data collection, design, utility coordination and preparation of a maximum of 46 temporary construction easements. Costs are also included for administrative and construction services and bid and construction phase services in case 55th Street cannot be constructed with the four streets designated for construction in 2023. The services listed in Olson's task order will be completed for a total amount not to exceed $210,588. Depending on the funding available and timeline for construction, 55th Street could potentially be constructed in phases if necessary. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve a task order with Olson for engineering services for 55th Street from Lamar Avenue to 165 feet east of Maple Street in an amount not to exceed $210,588.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call for the roll.
Thomas.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
Outen.
I.
Riard.
I.
Krang.
I.
Inman.
I.
Chosey.
I.
Davis.
I.
And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. We do not have any unfinished business on our agenda this evening and we do not have any new business on our agenda this evening. Before we turn to comments from our city council, I did want to say happy anniversary, 10th anniversary to Hillary and Max, and thank you to Hillary for attending our meeting tonight on your anniversary. So now we'll turn to comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for any of our council members to make comments if they have something they'd like to share tonight. Yes, Ken?
Yes, I just wanted to make an announcement that Ward Four meeting is going to be held on Tuesday, August the 9th at 7 o'clock. We're going to do it by Zoom.
All right, Trent?
Yes, thank you. On similar note, I would like to announce that the next Ward One meeting will be on August 4th, but we don't know yet the exact time and location, so stay tuned for details, but I just want to get that out there.
Yes, Debbie?
Ward Three will hold its meeting tomorrow evening here at the Community Center in the breakout room. All are invited from 7 to 8. And I wanted to just send a perfect thank you to the Parks and Rec for the wonderful job they did on the Mission picnic. It was absolute, the weather was wonderful, the group was wonderful, staff was amazing. I don't think you could find a better staff in the United States. They were amazing. So I just want to say Penn and your group, fantastic job.
Yes, Hillary?
Thanks. Of course, Chief just stepped out, but I just want to thank Chief and Sergeant Hodge for a recent ride along that I was able to do last Friday. And while there wasn't much action happening in the city at the time during the ride along, it was really informative and interesting, and I learned so much. And especially considering what happened yesterday, always a solid reminder of the important sacrifice that our police officers make every day on the street. So thankful for that experience.
Any other comments from council? I would add, if you haven't gone to vote yet, there is an election August 2nd. And if you're registered to vote, everyone will have something on their ballot in that election. And we have the early voting right here at the Johnson County offices in Mission. Next, we will turn to our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions and committees. First, our councilmembers Krang and Thomas for the Sustainability Commission.
We do that every time, every time. The Climate Action Task Force is continuing and we should be coming back to you soon with recommendations, so stay tuned. As a reminder, we've got our environmental fair coming up on September 17th. They are looking for sponsors, vendors and volunteers, so reach out to Terry Baugh if you want to get involved with that. Also, in the last meeting, we had two presentations on the sustainability scorecards on various developments, including the 58 and all, as well as the 56 and Fox Ridge. And the Sustainability Commission as a whole was really pleased with both reports. And then the group is excited about the Johnson Drive Road Diet. And that's the bulk of it.
Ditto.
Ditto, all right. Next, we have councilmembers Loudon and Riard for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
I could go. We can, we can feed off of each other, yeah. So first and foremost, the bulk of the meeting kind of talked about the sales tax renewal, kind of what they're going to do, providing some options for possibly signage around the city within that group and kind of talking about what marketing materials are going to be sent out. Also, new signs for tree identification have been installed in the Mission market site, Mohawk and Broadmoor. So next time you go take a little walk, check those out. They're really awesome and I love that. So let's see, Mohawk Park's still on track to finish in early March. And anything else?
Yeah, so I was just kind of wanted to add that they, the Parks and Rec Group had identified some different groups that will help them kind of get the word out about the sales tax, which includes the Mission Marlins, some Boy Scout troops from Rushton. PTA, the Stroke Foundation, just people who, groups who generally use our parks and facilities. First part of August is going to be hopefully the little grab your shovel and start digging in Mohawk to get that started. And then we, the feasibility study will be giving their reports soon, and there's a stakeholder meeting the first week in August for that. And then the Parks and Rec Committee are going on tours of our parks, just so that we can kind of see things in person. I will be going to Broadmoor, Streamway, Waterworks and Legacy Park. And also, someone from the State Sustainability Committee had come to our meeting to, you know, the way that we try to kind of mix things up a bit, and told us a little piece of information I thought everyone would want to know, that so far there are almost two tons of batteries that have been collected for proper disposal or recycling since 2006. And I thought that was amazing.
Yeah, Debbie?
On that note, I talked to Adams Cable Equipment Company today. He's going to be at the Environmental Fair. He's getting a formal invitation. He has offered to take the batteries. So that will alleviate a cost and also you will be able to see where your batteries are going and what the outcome is.
Great. All right, thank you. Next, we'll have an update from Councilmember Boltinghouse on the Mission Magazine Editorial Board.
Yes, thank you. The Mission Magazine Editorial Board met last Wednesday at noon, and we spent the meeting reviewing the latest Mission Magazine edition that just hit mailboxes. So if you haven't checked that out yet, it's just fresh off the press, a lot of exciting new content. This month, there are the remaining four profiles of council, as well as some really nice features on authors. Tom Cofflin has a book on baseball that Denise profiled and just a really exciting seasonal topical issue that we were happy to discuss through. So continue to enjoy serving on that committee and happy to provide an update of the next one for the next magazine.
Great. Finally, we have Councilmember Chosey with the Family Adoption Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I do finally have a report of an actual meeting to give, so that's exciting for me. The Family Adoption Committee met for the first time this year on June 30th, primarily reviewed donations and expenses from last year and what went well and what could be done better and what to expect this year. Some highlights of topics where, you know, we continue to enjoy having the ability to store and stockpile donations outside in the pod, which was a big help. Anticipate being able to get help from harvesters this year, but looking into certain challenges with different items and rising costs and how we might tackle those. Let's see, hopefully looking to duplicate the Police and Fire Department's serial challenge that has been done in years past because that's been very successful and fun. Looking for maybe a couple of volunteers to look over some bikes before the day that they're distributed because we have had some challenges with making sure they're operational and looking for Spanish-speaking volunteers as that was determined to be something that would be very helpful. The next meeting will be, it was actually supposed to be this week, it's been rescheduled for July 29th.
All right, thank you. Next would be my report. And other than the reminder to go vote, I do not have any appointments or items to report for this evening. So next up is City Administrator's report. Laura, do you have any items you'd like to share with us tonight?
I do have just a couple. Thank you, Mayor. I would echo Councilmember Krang's sentiments about even though I wasn't able to attend the summer family picnic, I heard great reports throughout the evening and afterwards. So always proud of the work that our staff does and it gives our community a great opportunity to come together and just celebrate. Couple of other reminders for upcoming events. Yoga on the deck, which is a first-time event for us, paired with a wine tasting, is scheduled at the Mission Family Aquatic Center on July 28th at 8:00 PM. We have a Harvester's Mobile Collection Event coming up on Saturday, July 30th, in the parking lot at Shining Mission North. As Councilmember Loudon referenced, we are working with the contractor now to schedule a date for the Mohawk groundbreaking. We want to make sure that we can time that close enough to their actual mobilization that we can break the ground and then our residents can see the work happening in the park. So stay tuned. I did want to report, and you may have seen the message boards that went up, or if you had a chance to read your Mission Monthly today when it was distributed, we will be doing a full closure of the Knoll and Johnson Drive intersection this weekend. We had hoped to avoid that, but because of some of the brick that is in late in the street, it's going to require a full closure to get the concrete ready. The crews are making great progress with the concrete repair. You can kind of think they've completed the south side, as I understand it, and are transitioning to the north side. But that Knoll and Johnson Drive closure will start at 5:00 AM on Friday morning, this coming Friday morning, and last through 7:00 AM Monday morning. And the message boards are up, will remain up, and then businesses in that immediate vicinity that will be impacted have received flyers and been contacted, so they will be aware of that closure. And just very briefly, I wanted to touch on a couple of things in the interim monthly financial report. I'll be sending out in the morning kind of a, we've firmed up, I think, the calendar for the remainder of our budget process and some conversations related to the gateway. So I'll be sending that out so everyone can get those dates on your calendar over the next two to three months. I think overall, our budget picture looks good. I just did just want to highlight a couple of things. As we know, we had the repayment of the approximately $311,000 of used tax revenues. We are slowly working our way through processes with the Kansas Department of Revenue to have a full and complete understanding. And then we'll be in a position to evaluate whether we think we can engage our legislators to help with some sort of notification process. That is, it is moving, but it is moving slowly. Our overall sales tax, had it not been for the refund, overall, our sales tax performance has been and continues to be really strong. So we're happy to see that. I wanted to just touch on, for those who focus on kind of the bottom line, you saw a big jump in our ending fund balance across all of our funds in June, and that is the result of the second half distribution of property taxes from the county. You will also in August see a corresponding decrease in that because we set up principal payments on all of our debt issues occur in August and September. So that money comes in, much of it will be held there. So I always like to preview that so that nobody panics about why we see a several million dollar decrease in that overall fund balance. And then finally, thanks to the hard work again of our staff in Parks and Recreation, if you looked at the cost recovery chart for the community center, and we've been trending in the low 40s in terms of cost recovery this year, and we are at 53% at the end of June, due in large part to a childcare aware grant that was secured by the staff for our Mission Summer Camp Program. So we hope that number will continue to move in that direction and look forward to the conversations coming out of the feasibility study. I'm happy to answer any other questions on that financial report, otherwise that concludes my report.
Any questions for Laura? Thank you, Laura. We do have a need for an executive session tonight, so the governing body will adjourn to executive session for the allotted time. And when the time has expired, the governing body will convene to do one of the following. Extend the required, time required for discussion and return to executive session, or continue with our regular city council meeting. As a reminder to the public, the governing body may take no binding action in executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council recess to executive session under KSA 75-4319B12 to discuss discuss matters relating to security measures. Also attending the meeting will be City Administrator Laura Smith, City Attorney Dave Martin, Assistant City Administrator Emily Randall, and Chief of Police Dan Matt. The open meeting will resume in 30 minutes at 7:59 PM.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas.
I.
Boltinghouse.
I.
I.
Riard.
I.
I.
I. I.
I.
Hi.
Very nice looking, very crisp and very comfortable.
Yeah, these are much more comfortable.
Yeah, I can tell the difference.
Yeah.
Second.
Aye.